A little fluid in that due to whatever may or may not happen. With regards to the current situation where. That being said, also segue into this point in time, we are planning on the first meeting on January 19th for our next town support meeting. That could potentially change. We are seeking all verticals best again for an updated. Um, working through everything to meet first on that. The primary concern is going over the budget. Um, I just want to address the virtual nature of the budget. Extremely challenging. It's not going to be fluid. Um, and I recommend this evening that we plan to get over the budget and perhaps cover it at the next ten person meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure if you have any suggestions. I'll be, I'll certainly address any concerns regarding the budget, but uh, it's more of an FYI. We continue to uh, break out the budget. Subsequent work sessions between uh, February and March will all have work sessions. Kind of budget items for review. Be approved for this budget. That'd be at the latest uh, before October. That is our fiscal year. If we don't approve it at the second meeting in March, the regular meeting would require. Just more of an FYI. Uh, and again, I apologize for the brutal nature of this. We're in each other. So, any questions regarding any of that information?
Uh, Bob, I, you know, I, I. You were breaking up a lot and I didn't catch the date of that workshop.
The date of the workshop is Friday, January 22nd. I will put out a reminder to everybody, uh, kind of highlighting the points. So, um, the information that kind of the outline for what we're going to focus on.
You know the time?
I apologize. It's nine AM to three PM and lunch will be provided.
Okay. Yeah, Bob, really bouncing in and out on that last one.
Can mute your mics? It might give us less feedback.
Yeah, Bob, I just, FYI, that last little segment was hopefully going to be cured with our new uh, fiber optics. Uh, anything else for Bob on that topic? Uh, being none, we'll move on to the water main extension. Bob?
Bear with me. Uh, just a quick update on the water system. I wanted to let you know we've reached another milestone in the water main extension discussion. Uh, essentially where we are at this point in time is the developers looking and requesting the water. Um, are seeking letters of intent to secure their uh, financial advisory. What I'm proposing and I, with the blessing of the board, I will move forward and have Mike Homier draft the letters of intent. Uh, with the developers between the township. Um, and under that notion that if we move forward on this, the township is looking to uh, enter into letters of intent with Mayberry. Or I'm sorry, not Mayberry, uh, Heartland Blend. Um, it would be with Redwood and Pearl Developers. Mayberry is not participating at this point in time. What I'm proposing and as we previously discussed, is the township essentially using the water fund to uh, pay the equivalent of what Mayberry was going to put in the original project construction cost. It equates to approximately 16% of the overall project. Um, there is a risk associated with this, but I think you'd be hard pressed to find a, a small risk like this for such a great uh, reward. Adding these developments uh, will certainly reduce the fixed costs for the water users. What that does is allow uh, additional fixed costs to be broken up or divided amongst more people. Um, so I don't want to miss this opportunity and I'm recommending moving forward with the letters of intent. That being said, this would be funded out of the water fund, the portion of the township. And it would in turn through connection fees. Uh, I should say it start off saying it would be approximately $650,000 from the water fund. That would be the township portion that we are fronting on behalf of Mayberry. And I use that term loosely because it's not for Mayberry. It's to get the pipe down there. When Mayberry Homes decides to connect, um, there is a substantial uh, about 3.4 million dollars in uh, connection fees that will be recognized on full buildout. So, I think this is a great opportunity. Uh, I think the township has the opportunity to step in and help get this project off the ground. It's minimal risk. But I just wanted to let you know I plan on moving forward with the letters of intent with the blessing of the board. There's no official recommendation. We had previously discussed this, embedded it. Um, and ultimately they, you know, again, letters of intent are not necessarily contracts. It allows them to secure financing for their project. Um, when the time the payment comes, we will actually enter into contracts. Um, so this is simply just uh, allowing the developers to secure and solidify their financing for the project moving forward. I tried to cover that very quickly. Uh, I apologize if you have any questions. I'll be more than happy to dive into it in more detail.
I have one question, Bob, and that is at one point we've talked in the past about Mayberry making a hole on their contract purchase, at least. And as you recall, I think as part of the purchase agreement, they were supposed to pay a substantial amount of money with later this year. How does this uh, affect that process?
So in essence, what we're doing is keeping them totally separate. And that's why Mayberry is not a part of this water extension at this point in time. Our direction to them has been you need to focus on the current outstanding sewer assessment. So there will be no assessments on any of the Mayberry properties or anything of that nature. Um, they have indicated that they intend to pay it. Um, if they don't for some reason and the property goes into default, at some point in time, the next buyer has the opportunity to use 535 REU. So whether it be Mayberry or the next developer, the property will develop with water at that time. Hence the 3.0 million, 3.4 million dollar in connection fees down the road. Now that's at today's cost. If the connection fees go up, it will be substantially more. Uh, I just kept everything equitable at today's cost. So I hope that makes sense. We've indicated to Mayberry that we're not going to participate. We're not going to enter into any sort of assessment for financing or agreement. The, the direction to them is simply focus on satisfying the September 2021 payment per the original purchase agreement.
So to clarify and follow up, the letters that attorneys will prepare with your assistance will not go to Mayberry. It would be the other parties, correct?
That is correct. Mayberry will not have any sort of intent. There will be no guarantees for the cost of water. Uh, we had previously extended them an offer um, to freeze the water rate. If they would uh, basically give a good faith payment of $500,000 and they have balked at that. They have uh, said no, we do plan on making our payment in the fall. Um, per the original purchase agreement. And at that point, the response was we cannot guarantee the price of water. Um, we will be just like any other market price at that time.
So the last question I have, Mr. Supervisor, is what is the timing to complete the process that you've just described?
The, you're talking the letters of intent? I anticipate the letters of intent taking approximately 30 days or less. They will then be sent to, well, for our board review. Once our board gives their blessing, it'll go to the developers. Their legal team will review. Ultimately, this will secure their financing. Their payment is due prior to awarding a contract. Right now, we have a tentative date in um, basically early spring. Uh, it would be prior to the township board uh, issuing uh, awarding a contract. We will have their cash payment, which they're all paying upfront. There is, they are not seeking any financial assistance. So, out of the project costs of the construction costs of 3.1 million dollars, they are funding everything but 650.
And so Kathy, will we have to bond for that additional funds?
We will not have to bond for that. I'm sorry Kathy was muted. I'm jumping in there, but uh, we will not have to bond for that. So that's why this is even more advantageous to, uh, there is a public benefit to this water extension as I had indicated. It will certainly uh, reduce the fixed cost by almost, potentially at full buildout, it will double our water service customer connections, which will reduce the fixed cost. So there definitely is a public benefit. This is not solely for the developers. Um, and there is a recognizable benefit to our water fund at full buildout.
Thanks, Bob. Is there any uh, other questions or comments? And uh, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but I believe that this has already been engineered correctly. Is that correct?
You are correct. We do have one minor, we're to the point where we have designed it and engineered. Um, the next step, which I'm seeking a proposal from HRC is just to simply develop the bid specifications. So when we're ready, once everybody uh, submits payment to developers, we can put this project out on the street competitively. This, which HRC will do that on our behalf.
Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else on that, we'll go into budget discussion. Um, this is a kind of awkward way to try to uh, go through a budget. This is a very, very important document. Um, this process starts uh, earlier than just this evening. Um, and thanks to Susan and Bob and James in the past, we, we've got this down into a uh, really three different silos. The one is the general fund. Then the second one is specials like sewer and water. And what's the third one, Bob? You're muted again.
We will have, uh, we're going to start off with the general fund this evening. We will have the other governmental funds. For the second, the third one will be the water and sewer. And the fourth meeting would be a final wrap up with CIP, which will be more of a brief discussion. Uh, when we get to the CIP, um, and I should preface, all these work sessions, we are not approving anything. This is simply a review. There will come a time when we re-approve it all at one month's sum. Um, but furthermore, even when the CIP is approved, the CIP, the CIP projects must come back in front of the board on a case by case basis for approval. You are not locking yourself into any, any sort of project other than that is your intent, if you will. Nice is just the general fund. Um, I apologize. I know this platform is going to be very um, difficult to kind of converse with uh, and, but I'll be more than happy to kind of give you a rough overview of it. Um.
Bob, I'd, I'd like to add one other comment. Um, as we all know with the, this pandemic that we're going through, there's a lot of uncertainty what's going to happen uh, down the road. Uh, we were part of something that maybe it's going to be different uh, than this, but in 2008, um, our board had basically approved a budget. And within about six months, the economy during the Great Recession uh, got pretty scary. So we actually went back, I believe, uh, and, and cut 20% off that budget. Um, just because of the uncertainty. So surely if things really change and the dynamics change, um, we always have the ability to go back and adjust this budget. It's a, it's a working tool based on current uh, knowledge, but as that changes down the road, we'll certainly uh, keep this at the top of our list of things to make sure that we're following it closely and adjust accordingly as well. So I just wanted to let, um, I'm sure everybody has been knowledgeable of all the uncertainties. Uh, you know, like state shared revenue and um, just the host of different things that, that we're all going to be going through, uh, not just Heartland, but everybody. Um, but we are in a, in a good fiscal situation right now. And um, I just wanted to throw that out before Bob gets too in-depth. Um, again, I think tonight was more of if there's specific questions. Um, let's try to get some of those out on the table so we can all kind of think about them and I, and digest them. There's um, there's no such thing as a bad question and uh, so, and we do have Susan here with us this evening. So if there's something uh, that somebody has specific, thanks for joining us this evening, Susan. So Bob, if you just want to again, go to start going through the, the process and um, if there's, if somebody at this point has something that they'd like to ask, just feel free to unmute yourself and ask Bob or anybody else here on the board. Um, you know, why we do certain things or why we did this and did that, or um, you know, whatever comes to, comes to your mind. So uh, Bob, I'm going to turn this over to you and uh, begin. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, I'm going to give an effort here to share a document. Bear with me one second. Can y'all hear me? Okay, um, basically this is a nutshell. I'll try and zoom in. I'm going to zoom in the best I can here. Hopefully this works. Essentially what we're looking for, I'm going to go to the top of the list here. Susan was uh, gracious enough to provide this executive summary. So at the top over on this side here, we have all the revenues. And then total estimated revenues and then basically all of our expenses, if you will. So I'm going to scoot down to, this goes back to our history, but I'm going to go to the current year. So here's our projected activity for this year. Here was our original budget for the current year. Here's what we are recommending moving forward. When you take these numbers and um, there's no real surprises in here. Um, but you can see from, we're recommending a 2.731 million dollar uh, or we're not recommending, that's what we expect or project in revenues. Last year was 2.707. That's an increase of approximately uh, $24,000 is what we're projecting in different revenues. Uh, they are itemized here. I'll certainly uh, send this out to you if you'd like. Uh, moving down the line, you can see our expenses and um, essentially our expenses are projected at uh, 2.2 million dollars. Um, and you can kind of see our, our home appropriations, the total appropriations is what's being proposed. Um, in prior years, you can see how that compares. Um, we're not sure what this is going to do as far as uh, you know, as Bill indicated, we're kind of in a unique situation with the, the COVID situation. We've projected the best we can. Uh, the best I can, piece of advice I can kind of tell you on any sort of budget is even if it's approved, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to spend that. Uh, we are very diligent here in conserving money throughout the year. It's not just because you've approved it. If we deem it not necessary, obviously throughout the year, we do not uh, continue to, to move forward on those expenses. Um, I'm trying to cover this somewhat briefly without going line by line item through this, but I'll be more than happy to address any sort of uh, um, any questions you have. You can see the uh, net revenues or net of the revenues, the beginning fund balance and end balance. You can see where we're projected for. Um, here's, oops, this is last year. Um, and here's this year, the projected, if everything is aligned with how we projected. Um, historically, we're good on property tax revenues. We're extremely good. Uh, our assessing department is obviously with the perfect AMR story. This is where it shines. Uh, we do very well on the property tax. The state shared revenue is a portion where it can get a little bit fuzzy here. We do the best we can. Uh, we believe that that is the most accuracy we can get with the available information at this time. Um, that does account for a substantial portion of the revenue. Uh, we're projecting 1.293 million dollars in state shared revenue. Um, but again, that might change and fluctuate slightly uh, based on some data that will be released in the next uh, 60 days or so. Stay tuned for that. Yes, I see a hand up.
I was going to ask, um, this budget, while I know we're only discussing general fund tonight, the deadline to complete it is, was it the first of March or the first of April? I can't remember.
First of April is when that's due.
So will we have a chance or will, will you guys have a chance, you and, and others to update the revenue side based on more recent numbers in a couple of months? And is that your?
And, and quite frankly, uh, our whole township, all the administrations, we amend this budget accordingly with projections. Um, throughout the year even. So halfway through the year, if we realize there's uh, a potential expense that we're not going to spend the money on, we reflect that and we actually provide a, an updated projection on that. Uh, that helps give it a nice gauge or a metric to the board throughout the year. Uh, Susan does her quarterly financial statements to reflect that and she does a very good job of that.
So Bob, I actually have two different areas I would like uh, you to take a look at. And maybe Susan can jump in here as well. But um, one of the long-term goals for Heartland Township is to have one year's revenue uh, in, in the fund at the end of the year. So basically, um, Pfeffer, who does our accounting, uh, that's one of their recommendations and we have maintained that. And so if you look at the, the bottom, when you look at the fund balance, uh, that is going to be just north, I believe. Uh, if that stays there or right about what one year's revenue would be. So that's what that, that, that's a, it's a surplus, but it's, it's put into this um, in case there is an anomaly like we had in 2008, that we can continue to uh, service our, our constituents here and continue to um, not go upside down. So the, kind of the, the nice things that Heartland does not have is we don't have any legacy costs that you will see at other uh, municipalities, meaning we don't have retirement packages for, for anybody here at the township hall that we're paying for after they retire. I think that's one uh, element that, that we want to talk about. And then the other one is when you look at the balance, uh, I believe it's the third lineup from the bottom that shaded in blue. Um, our board several years ago had a long lengthy discussion of what surplus or, and I don't want to use the word surplus, but we want to use uh, this vehicle to do capital improvements without going up for additional taxing. Uh, so we do not have a uh, a millage uh, for parks and recreation. Uh, at one point, a portion of that surplus went for additional uh, police coverage. Uh, we had worked with the county and, and we have not done that for several years. That doesn't mean that wouldn't be an option in the future. So that, that 52 or $520,000 is roughly um, that 20% mark of what we're, and it's just a little south of that right now, but um, then what that would end up doing and perhaps Susan could answer this question is we, we take some of those extra dollars that we had at the end of the year and we put that into our capital improvement fund. And I don't know what the balance of that is right now. I don't think it's part of our discussion, but I just wanted to, to share a little bit of what our, what our goals and objectives are when it comes to the budget. Is to utilize uh, dollars within the general fund for our parks and our sidewalks and other improvements. I.e. uh, this township hall was uh, paid for upfront with a loan, but um, we, we were fortunate enough to be able to pay it off way early, saved a, a lot of money in interest. So I didn't want to go too much into a little diatribe there, but I think those are a couple uh, areas that are important that we've always looked at annually when it comes to our budget. Do you want to add anything? Anybody uh, feel free to? So Bob, if you want to go ahead and, and just kind of go through the 30,000 foot level of, of the budget here and we can go from there.
All right, uh, bear with me here. I'm going to go to the top here. Can y'all see that okay? I can probably So essentially what you're looking at here is our real property tax. This is the number that historically we've said is we're pretty confident that we're accurate in that. Uh, obviously we have some new homes being built. Uh, home sales are kind of through the roof right now, uh, going very quickly. So other than that, this, again, this is all our revenues. So you won't see a whole lot change here. The state shared revenue, while we believe this to be accurate, uh, obviously it's contingent and we're, we're foreshadowing this. It's a projection. Um, I believe it's as reliable as we can get right now and I'm confident that we're going to come very close to that. Based on everything we've heard throughout the year through the COVID situation. Uh, this is a much better story uh, at this time than it was say eight months ago. So we're in good shape there. Um, other than that, these are pretty straightforward. Uh, property tax administration, school collection fees. This is our cable franchise fees, which is the PEG funds. Now you will historically see that the PEG funds, as people started to cut the cord, if you will, and get rid of their cable internet, that was projected to actually drop somewhat. Uh, COVID has kind of bounced that back a little bit because so many people working from home. Um, it's not as efficient to uh, necessarily be able to cut the cable at this time. And with these potential new developments, uh, we could potentially end up with uh, 1,200 new homes or uh, between eight and 1,200 new homes. This would certainly increase because this is based on a per uh, connection within your township. So, other than that, the other ra- revenues are pretty straightforward. Um, please stop me if you have any questions. Um, so this is where the township basically gets the revenue, totals approximately 2.75 million dollars. Uh, again, for the general fund. Um, and then we get into each, as you have in the budget that was attached, this is uh, your 30,000 foot flyover. You can see the, the increases. Um, some of them are more substantial than others. Uh, depending on what we have going on, elections is certainly volatile depending on what year it is. And if we have multiple elections, sometimes we have zero election. Um, there's really not a whole lot of significant increase uh, in these. They're minor anomalies. This does cover all your staffing fees. So we have had some staffing changes which might reflect a change in benefits for family coverages versus somebody who opts out. Um, again, these are all uh, very minor. You can see the end balance here. Our revenues are uh, sorry, up here, are, you can see our revenues in the beginning fund balance and the end fund. Again, this is simply based on the revenue. Or I'm sorry, I were in the appropriations. So you see the balance here. Getting a little twisted with all these different screens. I apologize for that. So as Bill indicated, we project um, a balance, if you will, of uh, potentially 449,000. And I think I missed a year because it wasn't here at the 550. Um, this is generally what historically a proportional amount of that gets transferred over into our capital projects fund. We don't have a millage, as Bill said, for any of our parks or sidewalks, pathways, anything of that nature. Therefore, this is how those uh, projects are funded and all our capital improvement fund balance. So when we transfer the money, it simply goes into a different pocket, which is our 401 fund. And it's called our capital projects fund or as known as our capital projects fund. So when you see that, that's where it goes. It's not necessarily, it disappears. It simply gets transferred into a, a different fund. So that's a 30,000 foot flyover. Um, and I apologize again. I would love to sit with you in person and go through this line by line and have a nice conversation with you. Um, I'm not sure that's going to be efficient, this particular method. We can certainly touch. We can certainly touch base at our next in-person meeting. I will say in the interim, if you have any questions, my door is always open. I'm here every day. Some of you have taken me up on that, and I appreciate that. I will get any bit of information I can get you, and you know, if you want to sit down with the Finance Director as well, I'm more than happy to set that up. So that being said, are there any questions or any concerns that you have? We don't have any prominent changes right now as being proposed.
Susan, I believe, has a question.
Yes, Susan, I'm sorry.
I don't have a question. I don't know if any of you have noticed, I've been typing madly in the chat box, trying to give you a little bit of an update on where we're at with the state shared revenue. The number in the projected field for this fiscal year is accurate. This is based directly off of the state's website, their projected payments to us. I have not updated the fiscal year '22 and '23 yet, due to there's going to be a January Revenue Consensus Conference that's held by the state, and I'll have more information than to be able to give you a little update. But in general, based on the August Revenue Conference, I expect our fiscal year '22 state shared revenues to go up slightly. And then the fiscal year '23 might be flat or a little bit of a decrease, however, we should see the results of the 2020 census in those numbers. And so I, while I, I think we're in a really, you know, good spot compared to a lot of other communities. And you know, we don't have, there's certain other taxes that there, that they get through this process that we never have gotten, and so therefore, the effect of lowered personal property taxes or other reductions don't necessarily affect us in the same way. So I tend to be more hopeful, conservative yet hopeful, that we'll be, our revenues are going to stay pretty steady. So let's see, and then I, then going back to the comment that Bill made of typically what we've done in the past is we sort of zero out the revenues equal expenditures, and we do that by putting the surplus directly into that line, transferring to the CIP. Bob and I didn't do it this time because I really wanted you guys to see, and Bob did too, of, you know, generally, we always generate a surplus, and it is used to, you know, fund our capital projects. Right now, we spent most of the money that we had over in the Capital Projects Fund, we still have, you know, $300,000 to $400,000 over there that is sitting in the fund. But we did spend some money this past year on the sidewalks. We had a, we did some sidewalk over off of 759. That was the one capital project that we've done so far. So that fund is in good, good shape, and we'll get a chance to talk about that more at a future meeting.
Susan, this is Matt. I have a quick question. You indicated that the increase in our state shared revenue by the population increase would take effect likely by fiscal year '23. Will the state go and reimburse for the previous years?
They absolutely will. They, just like they did in 2010, we saw a bump up, it was like an extra $65,000 or so in 2012. So when I talk about the fiscal years, you know, fiscal year '20, '23, we'll probably, we'll see that cash actually come in in calendar year 2022. So yes, we will get, we will get a corrected payment.
But for purposes of our budget, we will be approving this year, we're not counting on that extra money yet.
That's correct. And while we do a two-year budget, all, as you know, you're only going to adapt, we're going to just adapt one year, so fiscal '22 will be what we adopt.
Susan, I have a question. It's related to the fire budget. When, after the last election, we had, we of course got the new budget, new millage approved. I don't recall us ever rescinding the old millage, so the new millage takes over. And we need to do that, don't we?
You do. So you'll want to rescind that millage, I assume, through resolution on next year before the tax bills go out. I don't know exactly the timeframe you would want to do that. Kathy might know, or Larry, but yes, you'll want to rescind that.
Okay, we need to get a handle on that so we don't miss the dates that are going to be pretty important to the public.
I think we should do that sooner than later, so it doesn't fall through the cracks.
I agree. That's why I brought it up.
It's noted, and we will get that taken care of. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does anybody want to take a guess how close Jim and I were to property taxes this year? No, Bob, you already know the answer. $500, a little over $500, that's how close we were. I know. It's a...
Is that how you get an A in the classroom?
Yes.
That's the perfect A-mar score.
We have a, we have a super good process that, you know, if we could bottle up and scale, we could make some money for the township, but yeah.
When you get that final number, does that include like the border review? If there's an adjustment there? Because some of those are unknown, but that would, that's inclusive. That's the bottom number, right? What you projected and came up with?
Exactly.
Well, congratulations. That's unbelievably good work. And it's like almost a billion dollars, and it's like 900 million?
Yeah, in terms of taxable value and, and then, you know, yeah, and then our millage on top of that, yeah.
Thank you, Susan. I can't speak high enough on the Finance Department or the Testing Department. Those two teams work together to assemble this, and it's phenomenal. They always put it out of the park. So thank you again.
So what's the pleasure of the board this evening? Do we want to go through some of these expenses? Do we want to wait that, or that, so we can all be in the same room together, hopefully in a couple of weeks? It'd be a lot easier. We could ask the questions. I've met the mercy of what we would like to do as a group tonight. You let me know.
Well, we've always done it, the way we started tonight with income first, and then we, the next meeting, we did the expenses. And if there's a possibility that we're going to be together in one room, I would rather wait for that.
I think that would behoove us. But if we can't at our next meeting, let's go through the second part of this in-work session, regardless if we're in person or not. I think it's really important that we get through the process the first time. I would think in another two months before we actually have to adopt this budget, that we should hopefully have a clear vision of these long-term impacts and what that might mean to us here in our community and our businesses and such. So we just keep going forward, if that's okay. And then our next meeting, again, we'll go through, we'll go through the expense portion of the general fund. Is that okay with everybody? I don't see anybody upset.
No, and Bill, if I could, second, I also want to, again, send the offer to anybody. If you want to go over this, please reach out. That is our role. We're here for you. Again, I think, you know, I'm more than happy to sit down with anybody if you want to dive into anything ahead of time. If you call me on Saturday, though, you might have kids in the back. If you stop by my house, I'll make you pancakes with them.
Okay, want to go around the horn? Anybody have anything else for this evening's discussion? All right, well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn. Support.
Motion by trustee Jermaine, second by clerk Shofu. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Everybody be safe, have a great week, and we'll see everybody here in the near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, goodbye.
Yep, goodbye.
Bye.[18.83]